Great.
Yeah.
All right.
Live in three, two, one, no.
Great. I'll call the meeting to order. Jennifer, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein.
Here.
Ms. Krishan. Jay Glavender.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Ms. Unical.
Here.
Ms. Yu.
This is the boardroom.
Ms. Young.
Here you go, Mr. Lynch. That's your packet.
Very good.
Thank you. We have a quorum. First item of business is going to be the swearing in of the newly elected board members. And now, this is going to be you who is swearing us in, right?
Yes, that is me.
Okay, so myself, Janet, and Stacy, we're all getting sworn in.
Okay, so I am going to read this and you're going to repeat after me, right?
Yes.
I, you have to say your name, having been elected to the office of library trustee.
I, Jay Glavender, having been elected to the office of library trustee.
In the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook.
In the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of library trustees to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of library trustee to the best of my ability.
Yay! Congratulations!
Janet, welcome to the board officially.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is going to be, thank you, a resolution in honor of our outgoing board member, Sharon Bernstein.
Do you mind if I move up there?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Sharon. Whereas Sharon Bernstein has given freely of her time and been a valued presence at the Northbrook Public Library as a trustee since 2010, and whereas Sharon served as an officer of the board's secretary, and whereas the Northbrook Public Library has greatly benefited from Sharon's knowledge, ability, and experience, and whereas Sharon is dedicated to the mission of quality public library service and a fiscally responsible library, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Northbrook Public Library wishes to credit Sharon for her continued efforts to help the library grow and ways that benefit the community, and whereas the board acknowledges Sharon's contributions during the 2015 Art Program, 2018 Collaboratory, 2020 Study Rooms, and numerous other construction projects, and whereas Sharon participated in numerous outreach events within the community, and whereas Sharon helped the library through the COVID-19 pandemic by focusing on staff and patron safety while still keeping patron needs front of mind. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Northbrook Public Library publicly commend Sharon Bernstein for her commitment to libraries and thanks her for her years of public service as a library trustee, given in Northbrook, Illinois, this 18th day of May, 2023. So I have a motion, please, to approve the resolution.
So moved, seconded.
All right, can we, I think we'll just do this by a simple hand vote. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sharon, thank you. Committee presenting the slate of officers. Jamie, would you like to?
Sure. So the nominating committee met and we have the following slate to nominate to the board for next year. We have Jay Glavender for president, Stacy Oliver for vice president, Jamie Shu for treasurer, and Maura Krishan for secretary.
Yeah, so you're formally moving to nominate.
Yes.
Is there a second to the nomination? Barbara, thank you. Are there any nominations from the floor? In addition to the slate? Seeing none and hearing none. Can we please have a roll call to vote to approve the slate as nominated?
Mr. Glavender?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Spectre Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, so the slate passes. Congratulations to all the new officers. Next item on the agenda. Going to be the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to ask be moved off of the consent agenda? Seeing none and hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. Can we please have a roll call to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Glavender?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spectre Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. The library's policy is that each person who is here to make a comment has up to five minutes to speak. There will be a timer to show the countdown. There's a total of 30 minutes for all public comments for the policy. We also have a opportunity for anyone who asks for more to have a floor vote to consent to approve additional time. I believe we do have one member of the public?
Yes, and I have a time clock here too.
Okay. Would you like to just introduce yourself and then please feel free to address the question?
Okay, I'm starting now. My name is Mr. Lynch. And I put through a FOIA request to the FOIA officer here. You're the FOIA officer. What's your name, please?
My name is Anna Amen.
Amen. And I received a totally unsatisfactory answer. So I'm here today to get an answer to where the Scott's stamp catalogs 19, sorry, 2022 went and who got them. That's all. I finish with my comment for the time being.
Thank you for your comment. My understanding is that the volume that you're asking about was given to the Friends?
Could you speak up a little?
Yeah, my understanding is that volume was given to the Friends of the Library, which is a separate entity, and we have no knowledge or control of what happened to it after it was given to the Friends.
Why wasn't he giving that answer to the FOIA?
My understanding is that our counsel advised the public?
Who's your counsel?
Our attorney.
I know what a counsel is. What's the name of your attorney?
Ansel Glink.
Pardon?
Ansel Glink. Ansel Glink.
That's your firm?
Correct.
Ansel Glink.
Correct.
Who's your attorney that advised you that?
Julie Tappendorf.
Okay, you mean that on a note, please. Okay, secondly, Friends of the Library are still part of the library. Last time, and I have bought them in the past. There is a value to this thing, so I just want to know where the heck they went. And you guys are responsible for that. Sorry, you came to say what's her name, Katrina Elliott? God, I don't remember. You don't know what she did with them? And none of this would be necessary if Mr. Glavender returned his phone calls, didn't you tell me that? So now that you're all on edge, because Mr. Glavender's here. Okay, and what did Julie Tappendorf tell you?
We have no responsive records, and so that is how we should respond.
You have no record?
Mr. Lynch, your question to me was, please provide records regarding the sale of the 2022 Scott's Stamp Catalog. We did not sell it, so we do not have any records.
You have them. There's a value there. I talked, nobody will return the call from your finance department. Where is the money?
We didn't sell them. We donated them to the Friends, who is a separate organization.
Now you're claiming they're a separate organization. It wasn't me!
But that's what they just said, that the Friends was a separate organization. The Friends is not part of the library. That's what Kate and Jay just said.
They're a separate, they're a separate 501(c)(3) organization.
They are a separate 501(c)(3) organization.
Correct.
Would somebody please tell them to answer them to me then?
We have shared that with them, and it is up to them to choose whether they would like to do that or not. We do not have any, any control or authority over the Friends.
Okay, now if I'm getting this correct, you have no control over anything you send to the Friends. Do you get any finance? Do you get any money from the Friends?
We do.
Well, I would like to have those funds laid out in a ledger, please.
We'll be happy to answer any FOIA requests that you.
I've sent more people in Northbrook to jail for stimulating, and this is what I'm, this is what I'm upset about. I think there's stuff going on. There's money there.
The Friends donate money to us, and we'd be happy to give you a record of every dollar that they've given us in whatever timeframe you would like. You can simply fill out our FOIA.
This is what I'm asking for, lady. What is your name?
My name is Kate Hall. We've spoken.
Oh, you're the Kate, well, we've spoken, but you haven't given me any information. You've been very standoff and very, you know, against the law. Look, look, I've gone through this kind of, nah, I'm going to try to keep my, my temper down. I've gone through this kind of crap before. People are serving, have served time in jail after I got finished with them. Okay.
Mr. Lynch, we appreciate your taking the time to come and approach and comment to the board, but you're now becoming threatening? Yeah, I think that's a little inappropriate.
I'm sorry, what did you say, sir?
I said you're threatening our staff, and that's inappropriate.
Threaten them with what?
You just threatened to put them in jail.
I never said I'm going to put any person in jail. I said, I want the numbers.
No, you said that I put more people in jail than anyone else. That's a threat.
I have.
Sir, if you're going to be threatening, that's the end of the comment.
Well, it's your opinion.
This is not an interactive comment session.
And it's called the first amendment. Don't give me this scab anger. You're not God. I don't get down there and genuflect to a, but is this your full-time work?
Of course not. I'm a volunteer on the board.
Great. Then I'll find out where you work, because you're not doing a very nice job. Don't tell me when I have rights to.
Your alarm is.
You took too much of my time, see?
We're done. Is there any other public that would like to comment? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on.
Excuse me, I just want the answer to that question. Will I get the financial?
Submit a FOIA request with that request, and they'll respond to it.
To whom?
To the FOIA officer. You've already introduced yourself.
I already submitted it. Are you the FOIA officer?
You've already gotten response to your FOIA request. You've submitted. If you have another one, submit another one. That's the end of the story.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my friend. The Attorney General's office and I are very close.
That's great.
Are you the FOIA officer?
Yes.
Okay, did you get my request?
I got your request and I answered it. I do not have any records related to the sale of the Scott's Stamp Catalog.
Okay, so I got to go through another FOIA now. Just trying to get this straight. I've got to go through another FOIA now and ask who has the records, right?
I, the Friends has the records. I can tell you that. You need to reach out to the Friends.
Is it a corporation?
They are a separate organization, yes.
Corporation.
Organization. They're a 501(c)(3).
Why do I know what a 501(c)(3) is? I do all kinds of charitable work. That's one of the reasons I want those things.
They're a separate organization.
Wounded warriors and stuff like that. Would you write that down for me, please?
What?
My contact!
The Friends of the Northbrook Public Library? Do you have a sheet of paper?
Happy with the cooperation I get here. This wouldn't have been necessary if your chairman had had the courtesy to pick up the darn phone and call me when I asked him to. But he is not very courteous. He's alarmed. What, is that okay with you?
I have no obligation to call you for any reason.
This is the organization you have to.
Well, you're, you're kind of a jerk that you don't have any, I'm a, I'm a citizen here. I, I helped.
And this is the forum to come and approach the board.
What?
This is the forum to come and approach the board.
I'm not, I'm not asking you.
And you did receive an email.
I just said.
You did receive an email. We sent an email to you. You received an email.
What was the email saying? We have no record!
All right, sir, we're done. We're done. Kate, would you like to move on to the staff report?
Sure, I just want to remind everyone that summer reading begins on June 1st. This year's theme is Find Your Voice, and we are.
I don't get that. Don't lie here, Stu. I'm leaving. Thank you, sir. You're, listen, your chief of police here was brought in. He's a, he's a graduate of the Lori Lightfoot Police Academy, so I know who he is.
So summer reading begins June 1st, and the theme this year is Find Your Voice. Everyone should hopefully have gotten their magnet. And we will be bringing in Amanda Margas, who chairs the summer reading committee, to talk about all the fun stuff we have planned next month, which is granted after we start, but I hope that everyone will sign up for summer reading. We have some pretty fabulous prizes. We always buy lots of gift cards from local businesses, and it should be a lot of fun. We're excited. So, so I hope you'll all join. I also wanted to just give everyone an update on the Cherry Lane underpass. I hope everyone had a really fun time coming today to the library. The, Anna has been our point person with the village. They have been keeping us regularly updated, and staff have been parking on the street. We have not experienced any issues with anything with the building or anything related to, you know, cut wires or things like that. So it's going really well, and hopefully will be finished on time, which should be this month, fingers crossed. It's great. I also, now that we have a lovely new board member, our board picture is no longer accurate. So I wanted to see if everyone is going to be here at the June meeting, and if so, we'll bring our photographer out and have everyone come at like 7:15 to do photos. I'm seeing nodding heads, so that's a good sign, and I'll check with Abby and Maura, and if they can't, then we'll shoot for the next month. So wonderful. Thank you. If anything changes with your availability, please just let me know.
I am flying back from a business trip the night before, so, but I just want your schedule, and if there's anything happen last night.
You do not have to be red carpet ready. You just have to be your usual wonderful self. Tiara. Yeah, the Tiara, yes. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has on any part of my report.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Kate. Next item on the agenda is the board member reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report? Janet?
I am making it my business to try to check out some of the programs here at the library that I wouldn't normally go to, so I stopped in to the Y art, drop-in art over the weekend, and it was very full and very busy.
Yes.
Many happy children, fair.
Who else? Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. First item is going to be discussion about the strategic plan consultant and the special meeting coming up to interview them. Kate, you want to talk about the rubric?
Yes, and I realize I did not print them, so that was good. I'm doing great on the printing today. So as everyone hopefully is aware, Jennifer sent out the invites, so June 1st we'll be interviewing the three consulting firms, and I've given them the list of questions that we put together last month. So I've put together a rubric, not that we're going to be going through asking them questions. I've asked them, per the board's instructions, to answer the questions during their presentation. So we've set aside half an hour for each person, but we're actually having it be 40 minutes, but we've told them half an hour, and that needs to be time for presentation as well as Q and A with the board. And so I will email you the rubric stuff tomorrow. It's pretty much just like it was last month. I've added a little bit more in terms of the assessing. This is not a tool that needs to be used for, you know, scoring and compiling. It's just more to help. So you have a place to catch your thoughts and remember everything by the time you guys are discussing. And then the, the, you would make a decision at the June board meeting. So we have an hour and a half, or an hour and, no, two hours set aside for the presentations. If, of course, the board wants to discuss immediately after, we certainly can. Otherwise, the decision will be officially made at the June board meeting, and I'm excited to see who it is.
The next item is executive director performance review, which we'll handle in closed session. So we're going to move on to the new business. The first item of the new business is the Fourth of July parade. So I think Kate was going to talk a little bit about the changes that are being done this year, and then to gauge whether the board is interested in participating or if members are uncomfortable with the concept after what happened last year in Highland Park, because there are some substantial changes in terms of how it's going to be handled this year.
So I think probably the biggest change is the time that it's happening. It's going to be at four o'clock. They moved it later, not from a safety perspective, but because they're trying to reduce the amount of overtime with, you know, police and also park district staff. So this way they'll be able to only have, to have two shifts of workers instead of three, which is great, because they basically went from dawn until whatever time fireworks got over previously. It also is a shortened route. It will be going from Westmore, so at the corner of Cherry and Binkston, to Village Hall. So it'll be turning down Cedar here, right in front of the library. And the police have already started talking with Kelly about the, any safety precautions. They're planning the safety aspects now, and we'll be continuing to talk with them to make sure that the library is safe, just as they're making sure the community is safe during the parade. Those are the changes. And then I also surveyed the staff just to get a feel for like where people were at. And we had a, almost half of the staff answered, and one person said that they would be willing to walk. The most, the, as you can imagine, we have a lot of Highland Park staff. We have a lot of people with connections to Highland Park. A lot of people do not feel comfortable or safe walking, and so they've said that they, not that they would never in the future, but that they really didn't feel this year that that would be something that would, that they would be willing to do. And so those were the overarching comments, and.
Up until last year, when it was canceled, the library has historically participated, you know, boat or walking or doing something to have a presence. Not that we need to or are obligated to, but, you know, members of the board are willing, then there would be some presence. I'm not going to be in town, so I wouldn't be able to participate. So I don't know if those of us who are here.
I don't want to, but I don't know who the staff member that said they would be like, I'm happy to walk if board members want to do it or drive the library vehicle. I do not have an issue with being in the parade if the board would like to do that.
Just to get a general feel for those who are here, you can obviously ask Maura if they have you next month. But I mean, you know, if you are comfortable or not comfortable, if you would be available or not available, just around and Stacy.
I believe that I'm in town. I'm sort of ambivalent, having not done it before, in my only experience being last year when it was canceled. I'm not available, unfortunately.
Oh, I'm available, but I'm emotionally not ready. I have a couple really good friends from Highland Park and just, yeah, I'm just not ready yet, yeah.
That's fine.
And I'm ambivalent too, but there's a part of me that hates to not show up. That.
Now it sounds like it'll be a few people in a, maybe a van or the SUV.
I mean, I don't, I don't.
I don't know whether they're asking to do or not to do this year, what the rules are or aren't.
The, you know, we just got the application today, and I haven't looked at it yet. So I guess I was also hoping just kind of if the board has thoughts on whether we just as an institution should or shouldn't participate. Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
My thought on that is it'd be nice if people are comfortable, but I don't want to force anybody to participate in an activity where they're physically fearful.
Yeah.
You know, especially for their safety. You know, last year, I think everyone was a little bit in shock. And I think for a lot of people, it is traumatic to come back and to say, okay, even though it wasn't our community that was directly impacted, that it is a neighboring community. We all felt, you know, the concern last year, and, you know, for personal safety, maybe the first time a lot of people felt that concern. And so I don't want to put people in a position of having to choose to, you know, feel uncomfortable and participate or feel like they're doing something inappropriate by not participating.
Has there been any reaction from other community organizations, or are they asking the same question?
They're asking the same questions. They expect turnout, both watchers and walkers, drivers, to be very low this year. There, there was an effort by all of the nearby villages that are in, you know, that are touching Highland Park to make a joint decision on yes parades, no parades, and so they did all decide yes parades. Highland Park is doing a memorial walk, which I'm sure you guys have heard about. So, so the other communities are, and even Highland Park has been getting people saying, we should do it anyway, and, and people saying, that's horrible. And I think no matter what decision was made, it was going to have that kind of response, so. I don't, yeah.
I then would prefer not to participate. I don't feel that we would be, our absence would be shocking or un-community friendly or whatever. I, I didn't want anybody to say, oh, the library, but.
I believe none of the bands are going to be walking from any of the schools. That was already decided, so that'll knock out quite a.
Well, I guess then, you know, the direction from you is if you have enough members that feel safe with the staff that want to participate, by all means participate, but otherwise table it till next year. The next item on the agenda is the personnel policy updates for the sick leave, tuition reimbursement, and professional memberships. The policies were in the packet. Does anybody have any questions that they wanted to ask about the policy?
You know, that printing that I've been forgetting to do all day that I mentioned and a couple other things? There was a change that Lori had told me about before the board packet went out that I missed. So there is one item that I'm asking just to change the wording on in the tuition reimbursement. So we had originally had it where it was part-time, or regular part-time and full-time, and I had switched the wording to just all staff, but Lori, as she does, is always good about catching these errors I make and reminded me that if we include all staff, that will include substitutes who don't have any regularly scheduled hours. And, and that is something that we typically don't include, because they don't have a regular necessarily presence at the library. So my ask would be if the board votes to approve the policy, that we amend it to say part-time, regular, part-time, and full-time.
It's in the first paragraph or the second paragraph or both?
It's in the first paragraph, under where it says, instead of full-time or regular part-time that I crossed off. So it would be, library offers tuition reimbursement for part-time, or full-time, regular, part-time, and part-time. It's a third class of employees that works less than 20 hours and.
It's also in the second paragraph.
Oh, it's also in the second.
Yeah.
Oh, I, that too. Both of those places there.
So would mirror similar to what is the verbiage in the personal policy? So where it says regularly scheduled hours, like substitutes and seasonal. So like our summer reading assistance better with this just for the summer that they wouldn't be eligible?
Any questions on the change? Is there a motion to approve the? Is there a motion to approve the personnel policy updates to SICLE 03.2, 0.51 tuition reimbursement, 0.5.4 professional memberships as presented and amended?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Stacy, seconded. Could we get a--
Oh, it doesn't need to be roll call, sorry.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right, the favor outnumbered the opposed, the motion passes. So the next item on the new business is library security, which is also for closed session. So pursuant to, I'm gonna read two different sections here. Five ILCS 120/2C1, appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony and complaint logic against the employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to do indemnity. And pursuant to five ILCS 122C8, security procedures for the safety and security of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threat or reasonable potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property. Can we have a motion to go into closed session for those purposes?
So moved.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. Can we have a voice vote to go into a roll call? Sorry, roll call, that's what I was thinking when I said voice vote, to go into closed session.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Bette Kerbich?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Okay, at 8:15, we'll go into closed session. Okay, the general session is reopened at 10:02 PM. There was no motions or activity that we need to do after the closed session. The next item on the agenda is agenda building for the next meeting. We will have strategic plan consultant decision. There's also the June 1st special meeting, so please don't forget for those of you who are planning on being in attendance, June 1st, 7:00 PM, and two hours at least, if not two and a half. Also on the agenda building salary benchmarking discussion in closed session. For those of us who have been newly elected to the board, a new resolution for bank signing will be signed, signature card. Staff summer reading presentation and an update on the FOIA policy. Before we move to adjourn, is there anything else anyone would like to ask be considered for agenda building for the next meeting? Okay, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:04 PM.